We're well, we're ready to go and welcome Mr. Rattell.
Thank you.
We're appreciative of you being here and I want to remind people that are watching that we are in the process of interviewing the finalists for our superintendent position. And that if you are watching and have a question that you would like to ask, there is a button on the district website where you can go in there and you can ask questions of any and all of our superintendents and those questions will be posed to our candidates during our virtual meet and greet tonight that begins around 6:15. We'd like to say thank you so much for participating in this process, for coming and visiting with us and being interested in our position. I'll briefly introduce our school board members. Mr. Kevin Adams is from District One. Dr. Laura Edler is from District Three. Mr. Paul Fetzko is from District Two. Mr. Slaton is District Five and I'm Patty Hightower, the Chair, and from District Four. And your host will kind of explain all of those geographic things to you, but as a board, we represent the entire county. Again, we have in the room with us our FSBA team. We have a former school board member with us and then we have the presidents of our unions with us as well. I'll go over the process and the time schedule. We have about 90 minutes for our board to do the interview. We have five minutes for you to do an opening statement and each board member will ask a series of thematically based questions. Operations, business finance, personal leadership, instructional excellence, board-staff relationships. Each board member is allocated 15 minutes and is prepared to ask up to five questions. The number of questions each gets to will depend upon the length of your responses. After all the questions have been asked, we will give you time to give us your final thoughts. So with that, if there's no questions, all right, we're ready to begin and you may start with your opening statement.
Well, thank you. Thanks for this opportunity to be here. My name is Keith Rattell. I'm currently Superintendent of Provo City School District in Provo, Utah. I've been there for more than eight years now at this point and we're in the middle of a couple of COVID surprises right now. We started school last Wednesday and let's just say my phone has been lighting up this morning throughout about different things that are popping up. So I know you're dealing with that same struggle here. I've been Superintendent of Provo, as I mentioned, for more than eight years. I have a seven-member board. I have a great relationship with my board. I have mixed feelings about the prospect of leaving, but I have had my eye on this one for a while for reasons I can maybe elaborate on later on. Prior to that, I worked in Clover Park School District in Washington State as a deputy superintendent for four years. While there, I did a number of things. People always ask me what the deputy superintendent does and I say, anything the superintendent doesn't want to do goes to me and that's kind of funny and it's kind of true. While there, we had Joint Base Lewis McCord as part of our district and I was a part of several meetings and leadership groups and on and on that met with the base commander and base leadership. And I also wrote many Department of Defense education activity, that's known as DODIA, grants, attended some MSEC conferences and those kinds of things and I really enjoyed my time working with the military. My dad was in the Navy. He was stationed in another tropical place, which was Hawaii, as opposed to Pensacola, but I have a love for the Navy and that's one of the many draws that I saw in Pensacola. And my wife and I decided, because it'd been a long time since I'd been here, we came out to Pensacola about four or five weeks ago and spent a week. We stayed at a local hotel and just were tourists for a while and looked around and really enjoyed our time here and ate some wonderful seafood. You don't get a lot of seafood in the high mountains of Utah, at least not a lot of good seafood. So we had a nice time looking around and getting used to the place. We did drive over to Mobile for barbecue. I understand there's good barbecue here, but I didn't find out where, so I'll be happy to maybe look into that at some point in the future if I get a chance to. I was a teacher. I was a decorated principal. I got some state, a Principal State of the Year, a State Principal of the Year Award in Washington State. I was there for a number of years when I taught in Utah, prior to my most, my current time in Utah. I was one of the Teachers of the Year at my school and so I have a background in teaching. I have a background in administration. I have a background at the district level. I have a background with working with a board for, not just for a brief time, but for a very complex eight years. We've consummated property sales. We've consummated COVID plans and we've run bonds to build new schools and it's a different system there, but the point is I have a lot of experience in working with boards and I think that I have maybe some unique experiences. You've got really good pool of candidates here. I don't know that many of them, if any of them have a background in working in what Florida would call an appointed superintendent relationship with a board, and I do. And I can help the district transition. There will be, there will be some learning, that learning and growing pains that have to go on as the district adjusts from one management relationship to a different one. And I've had, like I said, eight-plus years of an extensive background of working in that environment, so I would hope that that would be beneficial. I like the fact that the school district is both doing very well academically and also can do better. I like the fact that there, I think it was Dr. Edler who mentioned in one of the board meetings I observed a few weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago, about the word turnaround. And as a high school principal, I turned around a school before there was even a term called turnaround. So, and since I've been in Provo, we've had several schools that have been part of a turnaround process. They're all some of the top performing schools, not only in the district, but also they get awards in the state. So I hope that that is enough of a background for you. I know you've read all my materials and I buried you with some, the breadth of information in there, but I'm honored to be here talking with you and answering your questions today. And I know you've got a great candidate pool and at this point, it's about fit, right? It's about, because everybody's qualified and at this point, it's about just who's the right fit for your district. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you again.
Hit me with the questions. Let's go.
Okay. Thank you again for being able to participate with us.
Thank you.
Our first bank of questions come from Mr. Adams and these deal mostly with operational issues.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I have operations management, covers human resources, operations, fiscal and facilities. First question, what would be your plan for retention and recruitment to increase the number of qualified teachers in our classrooms?
Retention and recruitment. Well, we've got to be aggressive in the recruitment in particular. And also, retention has to do with a lot of different things. Retention has to do with salary, pay, how we regard our teachers, how we support them, but there are also non-monetary benefits. Provo City School District has long been one of the lowest-paying districts among the big ones, the larger ones in the state and the board stepped forward just a couple of weeks ago and passed a massive task, well, not a massive tax increase, but a massive teacher increase, pay increase, that's going to be coming in. So pay is part of it, but from my point of view, a lot of it is also what kind of support does a district office provide for teachers, for them to be effective and for them to feel effective in their relationships with students. Even though we were, for a period of time, one of the lower-paying districts in the state, we had no trouble recruiting and retaining our teachers. We live in the shadow of two universities and so part of that helps, but we also have other districts that are much larger who are paying much more. But there's our students and people who would move to Provo for the purpose of coming to work for our school district because they saw the kind of work that we did. We had an outstanding research-based district improvement plan and we still have that and we're executing that. We have staff development opportunities that are way beyond things that most other districts do. The morning I did a kickoff, virtual kickoff announcement to the entire staff, I got an email from someone who said, "I have a friend who works in another district and she wants to come here, not because of the money, not because of the tax increase, the pay raise, but because this is just regarded as the place to be." And I took that as a massive compliment. It was wonderful to hear from her saying that. So having, building a culture where we are interactive with one another, where we find ways to truly support teachers and all staff in the system. I also know that with our location here and with some of the demographics, I would like to do some active recruiting of individuals of color who can come and work for the district here. I know that I did some research there. There are four universities in particular that I would want to target. I know that's not really my job to go and do that, but it might be helpful for me to be at some of those recruitment fairs and I've attended them before and sometimes it just helps to have the boss say, "Yes, we want you here." So I guess I could keep going, but in terms of retention, I think it's kind of the same thing. You treat people right, you treat them with value, you give them a voice and they want to stick around. It's one of those things that Stephen Arcovi said a long time ago, that if people can have a voice in things, they make much more of an emotional commitment and I've seen that in action.
All right. Second question, to what degree do you believe responsibilities can and should be delegated to principals and how would you hold them accountable for accomplishing those responsibilities?
Yeah. So again, is that under the heading of operations? So I don't want a principal fixing a toilet.
No, no. Yeah, yeah.
Certainly, they need to know who to go to. We have to have a supportive system in the district and I know you do. This is a high-functioning district in a lot of ways. It's very impressive, the research that I've done and the fact is, a lot of good things are going on, so you have those systems in place. If, I mean, that's not to say there aren't times that principals or other leaders such as me have to get involved in the details, but we know, we need to know how to solve problems and not get mired in individual problems so that we can't get to the overall job. So, I mean, when it comes to running a school, in fact, I recently had a situation here where there was a coaching situation and I had to leave that to the principal to sort that out. And I don't think he wanted me to solve it for him, but I said to him, "If I wanted your job, I would have applied for it. This is why I hired you and this is why I have faith in you that you're going to resolve this." So it has been taken care of. I don't think that, it was one of those sticky situations, so I don't think that it was really, I don't think that everybody's entirely happy with the resolution, but there are times that I simply have to say, you know, what is for me, what are my main responsibilities and objectives and how do I maintain those? And then, of course, that's one of the reasons why we hire principals, to take care of those things. Or hire assistant superintendents, or why principals hire assistant principals and/or why we have secretaries. There are different people with different functions throughout the entire district and so we allow them to do those. We give them, if they've got to answer tough questions, we get, make sure they know the answers to those questions, but not every call needs to go to me and not every call needs to go to the principal. There are some times when, as a principal, I did not want someone else doing it for me. I felt the need to do it. It's my school, I'm responsible for it. In terms of responsibility, I mean, I don't, I don't want principals to go in on a weekend with an electric saw in their toolbox and make physical changes to the building. That's the operations side. But I also don't want them to feel like they can just go off on their own, away from an overall district direction. We have, as I mentioned before, we have an established district improvement plan, which is focused on good research by a gentleman by the name of John Hattie. In fact, I brought a few visual aids with me today. If you want, I can dig them out and show you some books. I want them to maintain their consistency with the overall direction of the district. One of my challenges is we, and I heard this one time, we have a school system, we should not be having a system of schools, individual schools. There has to be some overall continuity to the direction that we go as a district. So if we've established a certain direction to go and everybody's been part of that plan, then that's what we do. And the accountability is, how are you accomplishing that plan? How are you buying into it? How are you implementing it?
Next question, describe your ability to cultivate a disciplined, safe and orderly school environment.
Could you repeat that question, please?
Describe your ability to cultivate a disciplined, safe and orderly school environment.
Well, there has to be, there have to be rules and understanding. The most effective thing that I've seen is again, when the principal shares with his or her staff about, "Here are the things that we've been, we're being asked to do by the district," then the staff, the teachers are then finding ways to be responsive to that and to implement that. So a great example is a fifth-grade teacher I know at one of my schools who took some of our directives on this and she asked her classes, "Let's develop some general class rules that we can all live with around this and then we are all going to be accountable for it." That's probably the best way because the most effective leadership in safety or any other area is to make sure that it gets right down into the system that you're running, not just the people sitting in offices or making the budgetary or the other kind of decisions, policy decisions, saying, "This is how it has to be." There has to be buy-in that permeates the system. So having those kinds of commitments at the site level for students who all know, I mean, that's probably the best way. This particular school also became involved in Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, PBIS, I'm sure you've heard a lot about it, and it really has to do with the kind of culture in a building. Our goal is not to be punishing kids and honestly, I've dealt with too much of that, where a teacher makes a decision not because there was, not necessarily a penalty that was warranted, but because he or she was just fed up with that kid. "I'm tired of you. You can't do that to me anymore." That's not a rationale. That's not a rationale for grading. That's not a rationale for punishment. So if we have rules that we all can live to, then that helps us to understand and commit to it. So PBIS is one framework at the school level. I mean, we do have to have policies in place regarding safety and security. We've recently had to, we had a situation in the state where it wasn't a school organization, it was a church organization actually, where there was an organist who decided she wanted to go in about two o'clock in the morning and practice organ. And she went in there and there was, there was a big kerfuffle, big problem because alarms were set off and police showed up and on and on and on. Well, I mean, you may know that there are some teachers who are just night owls and they want to go in at 12:00 midnight and work there through to three, but in the COVID environment and also in overall school safety environment, I don't want that to happen. So we spent a lot of time, we spent the better part of a year to involve the people, the people throughout the system, whether it's custodians or teachers or principals or our relationship with our local police force, we made sure that we were clear on our objectives. So we've now instituted a policy, the board recently passed it, about our hours of our school buildings, just because we don't want any of those nasty surprises that can go on. I could continue, but that gives you an overall view. Let me just say one more thing regarding safety. We just finished a safety threat assessment in our district. We're the only, we've been only one of two school districts in the entire state that got a federal grant and we did a comprehensive threat assessment and we've been working through the recommendations from that. Part of that is, of course, having the school leadership involved because that's where most of, many of the safety issues will exist.
All right. Next question, from a district perspective, explain how student performance standards affect planning of prioritizing of facilities, fiscal, technological and human resource projects.
I don't know how to answer that question because I guess the only answer I have is, if every single person in the entire district does not recognize that supporting student teaching, student teaching and learning and effective increasing student achievement, if they don't understand that, that's our, I mean, there is almost no second priority next to that. Safety right now is probably next to it, but that's, there aren't very many others. And so for every student in the entire school district, whether you're working in custodial settings or whether you're working, driving a bus, or whether you're working as a special ed aide, or whether you're working as a social worker, I mean, everything is about helping students do better and better and better in school. And so why do we build new schools? Because the old ones don't function as well anymore to give a kid's a rich learning environment. Why do we provide new buses every now and then, every few years on a, I think Terry told me today that they try to buy 30 or so buses a year. Why do we do that? Because safe transportation to school is foundational to what happens the rest of the day to and from school. We have so many things that we're responsible for and every, and people who work within the system should all know that. I mean, I was just talking with your director of your foundation. Clearly, the foundation's goal is to assist in the student achievement that goes on in the district. So it's just everything and if someone doesn't recognize that, I mean, I ask everybody, I ask this question myself sometimes, if I look in the mirror at the end of the day and I can't say, "Did I positively affect the student learning?", that better not happen tomorrow because otherwise, why am I collecting my paycheck? Am I almost out of time?
She put up the yellow, so but...
A minute. We've got one more question.
Okay.
All right. I'll give you the first part, who may not get the second, but what experience do you have managing capital and operating expenditures?
I, we sold a high school to a local university for $25 million. I was the lead person on that. I negotiated it. I worked with our real estate broker and I did that. I mean, the superintendent can't do everything. That's why I hire business administrators, that's why other people are running the numbers and those kinds of things, but when it comes time to leadership and decision-making, that's when it lands on my desk. And so what experience do I have? Happens virtually, virtually every day. And I've got a great facilities manager who right now has decided he's had enough, so he's going to leave, so part of that's going to fall to me until we get a replacement hired.
And then the second part of the question, I don't know how much time we have, but how familiar are you with, are our different fund types and what would be your priorities for capital project resources? for capital project resources currently available to our district?
Well, I, I have some familiarity with it. You have different systems here than I have in Utah, and, I mean, Utah's unique in a number of ways, and I think Florida is too. But the fact is, uh, funding of schools, there, there's a few different models that exist across, across the country, and I've been exposed to many of them. And the, the fact is, the best way to, to manage that system is to have, uh, a, a facilities plan that you're working through and have it in place. And so, what are the next projects that have to be done? What, what are the bid processes that you have to run? Managing the funds, of course, to not be overspending. I know you have an option of bonds here, but you don't do that very often, and having had experience with, with running and passing bond elections, I, thank you. Um, I know a lot of that falls to the superintendent, and I can't have to say, I don't enjoy that a lot. It's a lot of work, so I know you, I've gotta end here, but hopefully that addresses your question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Dr. Adler, now we'll talk to you about student achievement and performance accountability.
Thank you. These are a bit long, so if I need to break them down a little bit, just let me know that.
Thank you.
This district, in my opinion, has many areas that need fixing. It is usually customary for candidates to research facts and figures about a potential job. Assuming that you as well follow this practice, discuss the greatest barrier to a quality education for all children, regardless of their life situations or circumstances, that you identified, and what are your plans to be the fixer of that barrier?
So, that's a difficult question to answer, and I'll tell you why. Because in my situation right now, if I tell you with certainty what I think needs to be addressed, there are people who could legitimately look at me and say, you don't know us, you don't have any right to say that. If I don't, there are people who could legitimately say, he hasn't done his research, he has no vision, so, um, so it's kind of a catch-22 situation. That's a brilliant question for that reason, so thank you. Uh, the challenge of answering that is a good one. I'll tell you that what I tend to do is, um, I wanna break it down by school. We talked in the, in the previous set of questions about the role of the principal, and how important the principal is. I mean, I, my intention is to be an instructional leader, and to, to truly lead in the area of addressing what are effective, uh, instructional practices that work with kids. Um, we've done that in Provo, we've seen massive gains. But another portion of that is, we've also met with principals and had them identify what their individual challenges are for their schools. Because I don't know, especially with as many schools as you have here, I can't know the intricacies of all of those, and I don't wanna approach this with just a broad brush. It's not because of the, this group of kids or that group of kids. One of my basic tendencies is, you do not blame the kids, you teach the kids you have. There are people I have met who've said, well, if I didn't have so many of those kinds of kids, I'd be a better teacher. No. You can show how good a teacher you are by teaching the ones you have. I mean, you don't know their life situations that they're dealing with. Let me birdwalk here in just a moment. A couple of years ago, as I introduced that, that, um, principal to the entire district, we collected a bunch of stories. And the stories of kids who have overcome real challenges, I probably should have brought that along as a, but I was flying, I didn't have enough room to bring everything I wanted to, but as a visual aid. We collected stories of kids, parents who didn't come home at night, and kids were left to, to themselves all night long, and they would come to school tired, and all they would do is sleep, because they, or something was going on in their house that they, that they couldn't sleep through. But the most horrific one I saw, and I'm going to be a little graphic here as I say this, there was a story of, of a family that moved into a, a basement suite in a, one of our more impoverished areas, and they were told that they could get a discount on the rent if they would simply clean it up and paint it. There had been blood smeared on those walls, from the previous tenants who had been performing animal sacrifices in that setting. And these fourth graders were going to school, having slept in that environment, and having, and knowing the history of what had gone on there. So, every individual kid has an individual story, and, and so I, I think it's too easy to say, this group, or this demographic, or this or that, so I avoid trying to do that, because I think we need to, if teachers are gonna work effectively with kids, we need to know what their story is. We need to know what their challenges are, the things that they're dealing with on a daily basis. It's one of the reasons why we have more social workers in our district than any other district in, in the state per capita, because we've consciously gone out there and tried to do that outreach. So I will tell you that in my research, though, I have seen, you know, whenever you start looking potentially for a new job, at least one member of the family starts to get on Realtor.com and looking at different houses, right? So as my wife and I have done a little bit of that, I have a, probably a couple more that she's sent me already today, um, I look at the, the school scores. So, um, I'm, I would want to sit down with teacher of, uh, with the principal of, of School X, and say, why are you a three out of 10? Tell me the indicators, and what are the things that go on? Are there contextual indicators that can impact this? So one of those can be, how many teachers might have been on maternity leave that year? Or how many people left at a given time? I really don't think that, as I've looked at the school grades, and as, as I've looked at some of the zip codes where they exist, and neighborhoods where they exist, I don't know that it's about the kids. I think it's about what we do and how we reach out to them. And I'm, I'm talking partially about Pensacola, but I'm talking about my entire career. I heard it once said that a student's zip code should not determine their academic success in life, and that's true, that's true. And for everybody who tells me you can't do this with certain demographics, I want to tell you, but that school did. I can find a school that did it. And so we do not have excuses, we simply need new systems and new approaches. I hope that more or less addresses your question. I don't know, I didn't pinpoint a lot of data, but, but I've been very concerned about, especially with the prospect of getting this job, that there are a number of schools that are D schools, there are a number of schools that are perceived on these rating systems, whether the rating systems are valid or not, but their perceptions, uh, perception data, and, and at least some of it is, and I just worry about the number of schools that are in twos and threes and fours, as opposed to eights and nines and tens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Explain why you believe or do not believe that there's a strong correlation between neighborhood schools, parental involvement, and academic success or failure of poor children and children of color.
Okay. Can you read that one more time, please? That is a complex question.
Explain why you believe or do not believe that there is a strong correlation between neighborhood schools, parental involvement, and academic success or failure of poor children and children of color.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I do believe there's a massive correlation there, and it's because, uh, schools that are structured correctly, and I don't mean physically structured, but I mean in terms of their overall culture, and their model, and just how they do business, when the, the schools that are built like that are, um, are essentially civic centers, they're neighborhood centers, they're an anchor in the community. And so there are many people who relate to, I'm part of this school, uh, in this way. And we've also seen from a lot of Title I data, uh, that's been collected over many of the years, um, I'm guessing probably the last 20 years, that, um, the parent connections to schools is essential. I mean, that's one of the reasons why Title I will, will promote, have a family night, have a family dinner, have a family activity, to bring the families together, and parents, of course, but, but making sure that the kids and their parents are coming in. And you know what usually happens in that? Is that students walk around with pride, saying, here's my teacher, here's my room, this is where I sit at, at the lunchroom table, this is where I play at recess. There, there's a sense of pride and connection to that. So if you're moving kids all over town, they don't have that, they, it's a place that they want to go to on a weekend, it's a place, a place where the family can walk down the block and, and play on the swing set, uh, on the weekend, there, it, it's a connection to their community. So I've, I, I mean, I, I just, I've seen it so many times, and if you have to move, in fact, one of the challenges on the last bond that we ran almost a year ago, was that a certain neighborhood felt that they were going to be losing their school, and clearly the board had made a decision that it was on too small of a lot, and it was an impoverished area of town, but the community said, no. We, they did not support that bond, because they felt that that school felt, uh, was needed in that particular community. So, um, I, I've just, I've just seen it time and time again, that it's, it's essential. I do believe that. I'll try to be brief, more brief next time.
All right. Thank you. It seems that in this district, most if not all ESOL centers are placed in low-performing schools. Share with us your experience in improving ESOL students' achievement by placing centers in low-performing schools rather than in high-performing schools.
ESOL is a, is an acronym for English as a Second Language?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, every state has their own unique language. Um, well, in Provo, we have, we don't have ESL or ESOL centers, because, um, we have, we have a large ESL population that's just, uh, spread out throughout the entire district. But the reality is, that there is some correlation that you can see between, um, poverty kind of settings for families and a lack of knowledge of the English language. So there, there is some benefit to having those. The problem is, of course, how do you, how do you meld effective teaching, uh, for the students involved that doesn't disadvantage them in another area? So as you're teaching them the, the language, it has to be in the context of, so we're teaching English through learning math, and we're teaching English through learning whatever the subject area is that we're covering, as opposed to simply only ever working on the ESL, ESOL, um, principals. There are wonderful principals there, but, but, um, but they, so I don't know that I, I have a lot of experience or a lot of, of opinion about whether these centers should be in one school versus another. I can tell you that high-quality teaching, um, involves ESL principals, and, I mean, whether you're looking at, um, GLAD training, or PSYOP training, or those kinds of things, these are things that every teacher throughout the entire system should know about, and should be able to employ when there's, when there's a need. Good teaching is good teaching, and that's really what, uh, ESOL kind, type of teaching is. So, um, in terms of segregating or matching them to a certain population, there may be reason to do that, but there might also be data to suggest that there are other places that you can do that as well. So probably I would want to look at that particular system in this district and determine, is there a different model? Is there a different way to do it? Is there something else that we can, could consider? I promise I try to be more brief, so...
Okay. Well, this one is a bit long, but I think you can shorten it though.
Okay.
Okay. There have been many debates over the causes of the difference in educational achievement between the various ethnic subgroups. At the forefront of those debates is a common practice of favoritism, cronyism, nepotism, or, and/or institutional biases. What is your philosophy on whether such practices prevent qualified educators of color from being hired, offered lateral promotions, or being placed in upper-level administrative positions? And what are your plans to correct in this problem?
Can you read that last question, last sentence one more time, please?
The, the, what I'm asking is where there is favoritism, cronyism, nepotism, do you believe that that is preventing...
It's out of line. It's out of line. Should not be there. We hire, we hire this candidate, but, uh, sometimes we also have to consider that there are additional contextual things that you have to consider. Um, you know, I, I'm white, and, um, and I can't change that, but I also know that one of my obligations is to hire people who don't necessarily look like me, or think like me, or, I mean, y, you can't, you can't have a diverse, responsive approach to education with people who are all just willing to sit around and agree with me. I want people who have different experiences and say, yes, but I've seen this. And, and I, that's what I want. Now, whether that's administrators, or teachers, or whatever, um, as I mentioned earlier, I've, I've, I would like to be given the opportunity to be here, and if I were, I would want to find out what kind of outreach we've done to, in particular, four or five different colleges that I've researched, that, um, provide, um, apparently wonderful training in education, and they're in the general region of, of this part of the world. I mean, I'm talking in Georgia, and Louisiana, and Alabama, and, and I'd like to aggressively go after them. And I've said it, I said it in one of the responses I wrote, uh, my goal would be that if we have 37% black students, I'd like to have 37% of black teachers and administrators. That's what I'd like. I'd like to have someone sitting next to me who comes from a completely opposite background than I have. I know from listening to myself versus Florida, I talk different than you do, but, um, I have a different accent, but we're not just talking about a different accent, we're talking about different experiences and different viewpoints, and we have to have that if we're gonna be responding to this world.
And, and thank you, Dr. Adler. Your time is up, and so we can come back to it if we have some additional time.
Great.
So we'll now give Mr. Slaton, we'll talk to you about board and community relationships.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
The, uh, my, as she said, my area is board and community relationships. When a new superintendent is hired, we want to make the transition as smooth as possible for everyone. How would you help both the educational community and the community at large adjust to the new style of leadership that you would bring if you're our new superintendent?
Mm-hmm. Well, one way to do that is to get out and meet with people. Um, I've been working on, and will likely have it for you to receive tomorrow when we meet individually, been working on some general ideas about an entry plan. But I have to tell you that the entry plan is more about what I will do, and what I need to know and learn, and different functions that I believe in, as opposed to trying to say, well, this is how the board needs to behave, or this is how the teachers need to behave. This is, this is a different kind of entry plan, because it really guides my actions. That's, of course, subject to whether the board agrees with that. But, um, being out and visible, meeting with individuals throughout the, the, the region, the city, um, when I went to Provo, I met with the mayor, I met with the city manager, I met with every administrator in the district, I met with, um, uh, local university folks, presidents and others. Part of this is just really showing a willingness to get out and hear what they have to say about the district. I'm not looking for dirt, I'm not looking for, I'm not looking to do anything other than just say, tell me your impressions of the district, tell me what your hopes are from me, and tell you if there's any unmet need that you see in the district right now, what you'd like to see us do. I'll, I'll tell you a little secret of my administration. I've done this with principals, because I believe this, uh, and I, I didn't actually do it with myself when I wasn't a principal, but it's always a, an arrow I have in my quiver, which is, I like a new administrator, who, let's say, a new principal coming into a school, um, to have an early win. And so, find out what the staff has been wanting. What, what have they been wanting and they haven't? I mean, when I was a, a high school principal, I found out that they wanted a water cooler in the staff room. It cost me seventy-two bucks, seventy-two bucks a month, and I was a hero for doing that. So part of, part of it is really learning, is there something that I think that I could address early on, which is consistent with, with, with what district goals are, that I can resolve for the district? And that's the way I did that in Provo. It was a different thing in Provo, I guess, I, now that I think of it, the one thing I did there, they were, they were tired of senior administrators yelling at each other and treating people throughout the system badly. I gotta watch what I'm saying here. We've changed the entire senior administration over the years. Some were more immediate, some took a little more time. It wasn't that I really wanted to get rid of anybody, but I needed to get the culture changed. So I guess what I'm saying here is, my, my objective would be to be visible, be heard, um, listen to others, make notes, and report back to the board on how, on what I'm hearing, and how we can more effectively improve certain areas of the district.
Thank you. Like the superintendent, board members do not like surprises. How would you... How would you ensure the school board be informed on important matters?
I'm gonna have Bill after we're done or Andrea hand out something to you, which is my fifteen general leadership principles that I go to. One of them is no sudden surprises and that came from a previous board that I worked with. So how do I do that? I have not, with my current board, I, the trend has been to do a Friday letter. I don't do a Friday letter. I do an email every time something comes up. Sometimes it's multi, um, there are multiple subjects that are addressed in it. Sometimes it's just, here's a big thing that come up and I, came up and I need you to know it. And so, um, one of those things is, um, helping the board to stay informed. The other thing is telling people throughout the entire system, no, I can't put that on the board agenda at the last minute because that would be a surprise. We haven't had a chance to talk about it as a board, therefore, the board is not ready to decide on this, therefore, we push it off because honestly, you missed the deadline. So there are ways to nuance that, uh, which don't seem quite as harsh, but, um, that's one of the general principles that we can put into play.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What matters, what methods of communication with parents have you found most effective? And how would you encourage and leverage parental involvement?
Most effective is, um, we, we had a Gallup survey that was done, um, I believe it was a nationwide survey, but I know for sure there was a Utah element of it. Did you know that for most communities, you and I are not highly, uh, strongly believed by the community? They want to hear from their teachers and their local schools. And so a lot of this is to make sure that we're constantly communicating with the principals, with the teachers groups, with the teachers association, but also with, well, it could be just a third grade English, uh, third grade, um, group at an elementary school. Just, just when we have information, we build up a system, we build a system that we can get the information out, whether it's through social media, um, emails home, uh, printed newsletters, those kinds of things. We do all of those things as a district and as a board. Uh, we have board members who send out their monthly update. Um, there are lots of things that we can do, but we want, um, we want to make sure that the parents are, know that there's no hiding. We've, we've taken to broadcasting our meetings now. In terms of parental involvement, um, I, we have a, we have a system where we have a school community council or a site council, or you probably have a similar thing where there's site-based leadership and, uh, that, those organizations, sometimes are visited by me, sometimes they're not visited by me, but the, but the principal is a, is a really important part of that. I mean, it's just, it's just o- opening, um, communication avenues all the way up and down the system to let parents know what's going on and let them know that they're welcome in school. One final thing. When I was principal, the last principalship I held, there was a lady who came in, a mom who came in and said, I hate this school, I've always hated this school, you guys don't communicate. And I s- this was my first year and I said, give me two years and I promise you, you will see a difference. She came up to me a year later and said, you were right, it's so much better now. So just, just changing the overall approach that teachers and principals and others have to parents, we should not be looking at them as the enemy, we should be looking at them as our, as our allies. There will be some parents who will try us from time to time, but again, my role is to, to be a professional at all times. If somebody's swearing at me, that has happened, um, I've been called all kinds of names. So, um, it's my job to respond in a professional way. And ultimately, a lot of those people come on, come around to our side of how we see things or maybe we agree to disagree, but we can still continue on in a, in an improved relationship. So that's the objective, right? We're trying to make sure that people feel welcome in our schools. How we treat them is one of those elements. Thank you.
Everyone will want to know how to get to know the new superintendent. How do you approach and build cooperation and, uh, with between businesses, civic organizations, ethnic groups?
Um, I've known superintendents who have done nothing but civic organizations and this, the district doesn't necessarily go the direction they want it to go. I have known some who never visit civic organizations and the relationship with the community is poor. Or there are perceptions that are allowed to fester that because of a lack of visibility, hearing from my district right now on my phone, they know to leave me alone today.
That's fine.
But, um, there, there's just, um, sorry, that was distracting. Um, there, there are just things that we need to do to build that up. Um, review the request one more time for me, please.
How do you approach and build cooperative partnerships?
Right.
Among business, civic and ethnic groups?
Okay. So in the entry plan that I'll hand out to you tomorrow, I think, um, there will be, there will be a listing of different organizations that I want to reach out to. But honestly, what I've found is that, um, an, an outreach at the beginning of a tenure of a superintendency is not enough. There has to be, be interaction. So I go out to lunch every now and then with the local director of United Way. I go out to, to lunch with the, the mayor or the city manager from time to time. Um, there are businesses that, that I interact with on a regular basis. We have a, we have an Easter basket, uh, auction that occurs every year and I've got a relationship with the, with the, the people who help us in our foundation to, uh, to have that go on. I even bought a car from one of the individuals, so he's a local car dealer. So I, I mean, there, there are just things that you can do in a community that, that you don't hide in your house on the weekends, you have some type of visibility. I mean, at some point I do have to spend time with my wife, so, but, um, but we, we, we try to make sure that people know who we are and know what kind of people we are and also know that we're interested in the community and be part of the community, to be active, to be visible.
And since you said visible?
Okay.
Visibility.
Okay.
How have you engaged the community of your district? And how have you increased invisibility of the school, the system and its needs?
I've made presentations to almost every service club there is in town. I don't know that I should say almost, but I might miss one from time to time. We have opportunities to have, um, where I have attended, uh, school community council meetings, which again, are parents and staff attending those. There could be an issue that they have a question about that, uh, that I can go and answer. When there are individual, uh, challenges that can take place, we have, we have one school that has been in declining enrollment. We have a, I mean, it's really complex, I don't want to go into every detail here, but, but I, I wound up having, and I decided to take it on myself, I ran parent meetings, um, over a period of four or five months to, to talk to the community in that school about what the resolutions were. This was something that required my involvement and my attention. Dealing with anyone, any of my, um, coworkers, my, any of my subordinates was not going to be seen to be enough. They were there with me, but they wanted to hear from the superintendent. And so I can't tell you the number of those. I've been out making presentations with the board, uh, for, for bonds and levies and those kinds of things. Having a door open, we, we have a balloon, a hot air balloon festival. The people who run that hot air balloon festival meet with me every now and then. And, um, so just being responsive to individuals in the community who want to come and talk to you. So it's, it's both direction, directions. It's me going out to them and it's them coming in to me.
Thank you.
I haven't thrown anyone out of my office in eight plus years.
Did you say y'all have a hot air balloon or you just have a festival?
We have a festival. I, I have declined every opportunity to go up and one so far, but, uh, yes.
It's pretty visible.
It, it is visible, that's for sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Mr. Fetzko has some questions on instructional leadership.
Thank you.
Hello, sir. Um, yeah, just have to be careful who you get in that hot air balloon with.
I agree. One of them came down on the local fence and there was some damage done, so that talked it, it talked me out of it.
There you go. How would you evaluate the instructional program and how would you make changes to an instructional program?
Um, I don't want to offend anyone, but I believe that data is really significant. But data alone can't tell the whole story there. I mean, quantitative data alone can't. Qualitative data can help with that. I mentioned that earlier, if a school underperformed in a given year, were there reasons? I would, uh, a- as I've put together a model in our district of accountability, um, I have asked the principals to not just share or not just review and know inside out the data that I can easily pull off the internet, but I want them to tell me, is there any contextual information that I need to understand? Were they having a hard time attracting teachers? Like I mentioned earlier, I mean, we had one situation where a small elementary school had five female teachers go out on maternity leave. It's difficult to find five really high quality, long-term subs. So of course, when the, when the grades dropped, it gets back to reinforcing what I said earlier. We don't blame the kids. If there's, usually if there's a, some type of decrease, it can be resolved in maybe changing practices or changing something. It shows how important a trained, skilled teacher is in front of the classroom because just try, as I said, just try replacing five of them and trying to keep those test scores high. It's very difficult. So there are lots of things that we need to study. Uh, I mentioned earlier that we have, um, we have built a, a district improvement plan based on the, the evidence-based research of a New Zealand researcher by the name of John Hattie. I don't know if you've heard of him or not. I, we have, we built an entire district improvement plan based on that. Prior to that, we, we started to review his information, but I was aware of recent research around a, a process called learning targets. And so I bought for everybody in the district, I bought a book called Learning Targets. And we reviewed that as a district and we employed those principals over time. And in that time, our ACT scores have gone up, our, um, graduation rates have, have jumped significantly, um, our college admissions have increased, our state assessment scores have increased, although that continues to be a moving target because we seem to keep changing contracts with different vendors and different models that we're dealing with. It's hard, hard to find any continuity there or to even compare one year to the next because the criteria is different. But, um, and by the way, I serve on a couple of committees at the state level to help guide those things. I guess I haven't had enough of an influence yet because, um, we still keep moving around a little bit, but, um, but the approach is what does the research say? I really, I mean, I, I did have a principal who came to me one time and it was something I mentioned earlier when Dr. Edler asked her questions. He came to me and said, I'm having a hard time getting my staff to buy into some of these changes I need them to make. They think we're good enough, but it's because our student population has changed. We have a significant, we've had a significant increase in Latino students who have come to the district. And again, I, I kind of went off and just said, we, we don't blame the kids. We teach the kids we have. That's our objective. You, you don't wish to have different kids, you teach these ones right now. And as superintendent, I get to hammer that point. I get to be immobile on that point and I feel that way very strongly. Um, and so we, we pull out the data and, and my point is, if you say you as a school can't do it, I can find a school just like your demographics with your very situation who is really hitting it out of the park. So let's study why that is. And I don't, I don't expect that we would go from a D school to an A school in one year. I would want us to, to put together a very measured, thoughtful plan and little by little we see incremental gains. Sometimes, I have to tell you, I saw this, I have a prin- a principal, she's since retired, but she's on my list of recommendations, if you want to call her Gay Gibbs. Gay was a very successful elementary school principal. I put her into a middle school, a middle school that had been performing at about a C-plus. On state grades, they jumped right to, was it a B or an A the first year? It was, it was a dramatic improvement. Way better. I know, they've been in, in the D category if I remember. I, it's been a while, but the point is, the principal can make a difference when the principal has an idea of different systems that can come in. And so working on, what are the essentials about what we teach? And how do we measure those essential in a meaning, those essentials in a meaningful way? What does it mean if a kid doesn't achieve those? How do we work with them still? So there, there are lots of elements of this. This is one of those areas I feel that I, I have done well and, um, and again, as superintendent, I have that bully pulpit. Um, again, I, I think you have some wonderful candidates for this position. I've been fortunate enough to actually hold the position of saying, let's say, at the boss.
All right. How do you balance the needs of special populations such as exceptional student ed, the ELL or ESOL, um, and gifted, uh, gifted and talented? What have you done to address the diverse needs of student populations in your district?
Right. Well, we, just, just like your district, we have, we have a lot of diversity. We have a special ed population that exceeds the state average of twelve and a half percent. We have a lot of ESL, um, students who, um, you know, I saw a study one time that, that showed me that ESL students, I'm, I'm going to speak a little crassly, a little bluntly here, but ESL students are not dumb, they just don't know the language. That's the barrier. That's what it is. So we have tried to build ESL principles and I've been frustrated, honestly, let me vent here for a moment, this'll feel good. The state of Utah, I believe, is in denial. Our largest single population increase in the state of Utah is non-English speakers. Funding doesn't increase, the recognition of it doesn't even increase. So that's a frustration. It's left to us as districts to, to come up with our own resources and to put together our own systems because the legislators don't even see it. Um, I have some friends who are legislators. I know they do, but I don't know that, that the legislature as a whole does. So there are challenges that we face here and, um, so we, we, we have to make sure that we are having those voices. We have, I, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but many of the students who are gifted, their parents can be, uh, very assertive. There's, there does tend to be somewhat of a correlation between students who are more gifted and the kind of home environment that they're sitting in. So those parents generally advocate for their students very well. Sometimes they don't. Honestly, I probably more worried about the ones who have fewer advocates because it's our job to do that. And we have to do that both by policy and by practice. And so we do. Uh, we, we bring in students, we hold special events for a number of different groups around, we recognize them. Uh, this gets kind of into the topic of diversity and I, I spoke about this a little bit on video with you, but we actually do have a lot of, a lot of, um, sub-organizations in our district that help parents of different groups of students navigate our system. Our goal is not necessarily, necessarily to be political, our goal is to, to help parents in the most important thing, which is helping their kid, their kids succeed in our schools. So, um, I would also tell you that, uh, we, I have a regular council meeting a week, I don't call it cabinet, it's a council meeting of my senior administrators. Uh, I ha- I involve in that regularly, our director of special ed, who is not a member of council, but I feel like it's important for him to be there and to point out things that we are, uh, struggling with. We have a director who's over, over title programs, the same thing. Um, our, we have, uh, in fact, it's important enough to our teaching and learning director that she, um, she reports directly to me and she, um, leads the process for our gifted education program. So we think we, we are, we're not necessarily making everybody thrilled or happy, but we're addressing the needs of the diversity throughout the district.
Okay. What do you think the role of extracurricular activity should be in the school system?
It keeps kids involved. Um, we need to make sure that they, they have those opportunities before them. Um, they may not wind up playing trumpet in the Chicago Symphony, they may not wind up playing, um, left tackle for, in the NFL, um, but there are opportunities. Some of these students, okay, so I was, I was a band teacher, my, in my last teaching position in high school. I had a student who, his only class he came to was my class. He was skipping out of absolutely everything else. He's now a, a trained accountant. At some point, him staying in school with me helped him to accomplish a career goal. I, I work right across the street from the Utah Valley Hospital. One day I got a visit from Dr. Zach Allred. Dr. Zach Allred played trombone in my band. And, and so, um, you're not necessarily going to become a professional at ballet or dance or, but you can have those experiences and some of the things you learn from those go- you can have those experiences, and some of the things you learn from those go with you the rest of your life. You probably know from my background, from reading my stuff, I'm a, I was a professional trombone player. Don't ever ask me to play for the board, please. Okay? I haven't practiced for years. I'm terrible now. But what I learned, sitting alone in the practice room and working in ensembles with others, and going on tours internationally, they can't be replaced. Unfortunately, I mean, I'm not denigrating math, but you're not going to learn that in a math class sometime. So, it's essential. Unless, of course, a coach gets COVID and infects the rest of the team, as may have happened in the last few days here, so we won't talk about that. I need counseling on that one, though. So, anyway, thank you.
All right. What is the role of career technical education, and how have you expanded this role in any of your previous positions?
Yes. So, I wrote about the fact that we're about to implement, even with COVID going on, we're about to implement a new program that has been started out of Kansas City, and it's called CAPS. It's an opportunity for students to sit down and work with sponsoring industries, and not just sponsoring, but they're actually giving us, our students, real-life problems to solve. Some of the problems that they get contracted to solve, they review them, of course, there's a set of guidelines that we work with, but that's one of those elements. I tend to think of career technical, though, as not just woodshop or engineering or those things. You can find meaning in career technical opportunities in English class and in math class, and whether it's the engineering aspect of robotics or whatever. I mean, even technical writing is a skill that some people make good careers out of. And yet, there isn't really, there aren't very many pathways out in the public education for that system yet. So, those are the kinds of things that we have developed and are developing. You may or may not have noticed in my write-up that I, of the five questions, that you did, one of the questions I addressed that, "We started a careers and education program," and that was my direction, that I wanted that to happen. I kept hearing about this shortage of teachers, and I thought, "Why aren't we growing our own? We have the opportunity." I mean, it has varying interests from year to year, but it has been successful at directing many of our students into a field that they've decided to consider, at least consider, in university. And so, you know, is that woodworking or welding? No. And I'm not, again, I'm not denigrating that, but it's a broadened view of what is career technical, and what are the, what are the long-range goals and views of what we're doing with our programs?
All right. And my last question.
Thank you.
What types of programs, oh, no, I've got to do it fast. What types of programs have you found to be the most effective in improving student learning?
CTE programs or general programs?
General programs.
I don't know that I've found too many programs that have been. I've found that it has to do with, with understanding what effective teaching is, and what the research says about how we should be employing those practices and what settings there are. Again, I refer you to John Hattie and his work invisible learning, and he's written probably 15 books now, so I would start with the white one, the first one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm grateful for the break. I'm getting tired of hearing myself talk.
Well, I get to ask five questions now.
Great.
Some of them you've already covered in some detail, so, but the first one. Please give a thumbnail sketch of your professional experiences, your pivotal belief in public education, and which of these experiences prepare you to be our next superintendent?
Well, I think, I think I need to hear the question again.
Okay. Basically, a thumbnail sketch of your professional experiences, because you've kind of done that already.
Right.
Your pivotal belief in public education, and which of these experiences prepared you to be our next superintendent?
Okay, thank you. I was a good teacher. I was a decorated teacher. I had great loyalty from my students and from their parents. I had the respect of my colleagues. I guess I didn't understand why students didn't feel that way about all their teachers. I once supervised a teacher who was a math teacher, and I said, "What do you, what do you think is the most important?" He was teaching a low-end math class, students who were really struggling. I said, "What do you think is the most important thing that you, that your students need to learn?" And he said, "They need to show their work, they need to know how to be disciplined, they need to be this and that." And I said, "Nope, I disagree. I think they need to know they can do it." Because in a low-end math class, they've failed all their lives. They've failed their way through school, and they have no confidence in themselves. And I think it was that conversation, that realization, that started to formulate in me the idea that I needed to try to have even a broader influence. I know I'm weird. I know I'm different. I don't look at things or think of things, think of things the way most other superintendents do. I look at them from, from not just a practical standpoint, but truly, what is the psychological side of this? What does somebody need out of this? How can we give them what they need? Do they even, can they even articulate what their needs are? As such, I have, I mean, I have an interest in helping with budget development, I have an interest in making sure that our schools are well-built, I have an interest in making sure that our schools are secure, I believe in student safety like crazy. I mean, I can talk about the millions of things that I do as a superintendent, but the fact is, fundamentally, this job is about student learning. And if students aren't learning, then we're not doing it right. And I believe that so much, I haven't told you this yet, two years ago and three years ago, I had enough time that I could carve out in my day where I went to, I was a professional trombone player, I went over and worked with, with one of the high school brass classes and trained them how to play something, and we took it to festivals, and we took it to state, and we got top scores. And I wanted to do that because I wanted people to see how important teaching and learning was to me, and that I was willing to employ the practices that I was telling other individuals need to be employed in classrooms. I was able to model that and do it myself with effectiveness, not just do it, but get the desired results. So, I know from having read over a number of things on your website that there have been feelings expressed about, we need somebody who has been a principal, we need somebody who has been a teacher, we need somebody who understands the technical aspects of education. I mean, I read through all the comments, I can't go into all of them right now, I know you know them inside out. I do those. But, I mean, they're just part of how I operate, and I've shown that for eight-plus years, actually, long before that, but, but I probably am a different kind of superintendent than what you're, what you may be picturing. My first year, I was at, in Provo, I was in every single classroom at least once a year. And when I went back to the teachers in our kickoff and I told them what I saw, I told them that I had seen very little in terms of visible planning of how the day was structured. I mean, yeah, we go to recess at 10:30, and we go to lunch at 12:05, or I saw all those things on the board, but I didn't say, "See, when we're studying math, do we have a particular goal in what we're learning today?" And those are the things that have, I don't know that there's any single thing, it's just a compilation of diverse experiences that I've had throughout my career that has just culminated in, I truly believe that our goal is teaching and learning, effective teaching and learning. And there is no prouder moment than the year that I was a high school principal, and we went from 81%, 88% graduation rate to 99.3. Or this past few years, when we've gone from a 71% graduation rate as a district, and now we're pushing 90. It's going to be weird after last, we will have a significant decrease after last year's COVID event, but, but those are the metrics I look at, those are the things that really matter. And it's not because we're giving away grades, it's because kids are learning and they're succeeding. I'll be done on that.
Thank you for your passion. Based on your knowledge of our school district and community, what do you believe should be the top two priorities for our school district, for our school system?
If I were to set one goal right now, based on what I know, and I have to qualify that way, because again, I'm an outsider.
That's right.
I would want every school that is not an A school to increase one level on the school grading system. I would want the school to put together some kind of plan to do that. Secondly, I would, I would want, I don't know how much stock to put in this. I'm not the biggest fan of how people behave on social media, but I would want the perceptions about the district on social media to improve in a way that I could measure. We would have to talk about what those metrics would be, but I would want that to occur. And then possibly break it down in terms of certain neighborhoods, parts of the county, demographics, whatever the appropriate sub-metrics might be, but those are probably the two that come to mind right now.
Thank you.
Can I clarify?
Yes.
I don't want to leave the impression that I think everybody thinks your district is horrible. I know you don't. I know you know that. I get weary of people on social media teeing off when they don't really know what they should know. And so, I would hope that the answer to that might be a different approach to communication or a different amount of awareness about what we're doing and why. And social media is one of those challenges because people can sit in their pajamas and write anything they want to, and, and I like to be accountable for those things, but I also recognize some of them are just so ill-informed that they don't help us. So, anyway.
Okay. You've already talked about being connected with the military. We're a military community.
Yes.
What suggestions do you have, again, we're going to talk a little bit about perception, to strengthen our relationship with NAS, Naval Air Station Pensacola? As the superintendent, how would you work to win back the military families who are currently making other educational choices for their children?
I don't know that I would, I'd have to think about whether there would be a particular outreach strategy that I would want to use. I think the best way to win back people who have left the district is to show them the performance of our schools. We have several charter schools in town. My schools outperform the charter schools. As such, they have to advertise and recruit. We have no trouble. So, not just because it's public education and everybody has a right, but they know the culture of the district that we have. So, a lot of it is, is kind of the proof is in the pudding. The, the performance of the district, the performance of the school, the reputation that a school gains over time, and especially if you're seeing those incremental gains that I would hope we could achieve, I think those are the things that would draw people back. I would also want to have some serious conversations with the base commander, or whomever the base commander has delegated to be the liaison with us, probably several people in all honesty, but if it goes the way it did before, but, yeah, I would, I would want to have some conversations about that.
Thank you. As you probably know from your research, we are a choice district. Year after year, many of our schools receive more requests than enroll, for enrollment than we have capacity to accommodate. How would you address the issue that desired schools are not available?
We did that with a number of programs. We've approached it from a program standpoint, kind of similar to, I guess, a school-by-school standpoint, and it, we will, we will, we put together a policy that the board approved on the priorities of who has first right and who has first access. So, people within that, those school boundaries get first choice. People who, families who may have siblings in those schools may then get second choice. There may be a lottery at some point down the road, depending on how that goes. Now, I'd have to square that with, with Florida state law on choice and local district policy on choice issues, but those are the ways that we've done this because it can't be favoritism, it can't be cherry-picking. I've seen at some point that there are, there are choice students who principals sometimes like to move out at the time of the test because they're not performing. That's not the criteria we look at. We look at, we look at things fairly. Is this, is this a fair and explainable and defensible process? And first, like I said, would be those who actually live in the attendance boundary of that school, and then again, it has proven so effective for us in this, in our application of this practice that, if possible, I would probably want to address that with you here to encourage you to look at it.
Okay. And my last question. You will be hired after the school year has begun.
Yeah.
Employees are in place, our COVID protocols are in place, the strategic plan has been approved. So, what steps would you take to create your 100-day plan?
Well, really, it would be just a matter of establishing relationships and talking with people. I have found that it really doesn't matter who, I mean, even if you hire the inside candidate for it to be superintendent, there will always be a perception that it's a new person in a new position, and so, they're watched very skeptically. And so, is this person going to come in and blow everything up? And, and some people will want that to happen, and some people will not. My, my general strategy, whenever I've come to a new school or a new district, is unless there's something really critical, life, safety, health, legality, any of those kinds of things, unless there's something that falls into that category, I pretty much leave it alone for a while. And for a while being probably not to exceed a year. Because if after a year, I haven't learned enough about some concerns I may have, or some wishes the community, or the board, or the staff, or whomever have, if I haven't learned enough about that, then it's taking too long. But the fact is, that's one of the benefits to getting somebody coming in with experience as a superintendent who has also done an entry into a district and also is, is willing to, well, is able to balance numerous perspectives. Like I said, there will be some people who say, "Don't touch a thing." There will be others who will say, "Start again, the whole thing's a wreck," and, and everything in between. So, sifting through that and navigating it takes a little time, and so, I made it really clear that there was an individual, I knew that certain people in the community wanted him fired. I said, "Unless they're violating those standards," this is when I went to Provo eight, nine years ago, "I don't intend to fire anyone. I intend to watch how people work. I want to get to know the, what our tendencies are in this district, and then I want to know if there are some things that, based on my background and my beliefs and how I operate, the way I think things maybe need to change." By the way, regarding those surprises, you would know about that. You would know about that well in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, at this time, we're going to let you just add any additional information that you feel like we need to know that we haven't gotten from you in our questioning.
How much time? Eight minutes?
Yeah.
So, I'd like to defer to Dr. Edler, if she would like to ask me any of her remaining questions. Is that okay? Is that going to get me to another room?
Yeah, I was going to let you do yours, and then if we still had time, I would let her answer her question.
Okay, thank you. Unless you don't want to.
No.
That's your call.
She's ready.
It's your call. Okay.
That's my friend. In this district, our pandemic is the Good Old Boys Club. Convince me that you will reject membership in the Good Old Boys Club and that you will lead this school district objectively with the major focus of academic success for all children and a balance of diversity and inclusion in every aspect.
Well, I don't know that I will convince you, but it's what I've done. That's my record.
It's what?
It's my record, it's what I've done. I'm sorry I talk funny, but, yeah, it's what I've done. I make sure that every person has access to me, I make sure that every person, like I said earlier, I want, I want a diverse team. I intend to actively recruit a diverse team. It's, it's what I've done.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
I could have said that more passionately, so I could really convince you, but I'm not that guy.
He can do that tomorrow.
Okay.
You can convince him. So, we still have a few minutes, if you have anything else you want to share, or if you have any questions for us.
What, in your view, as a board, what is your What, in your view, as a board, what is your perception of the professional development opportunities that exist for teachers, especially as they relate to improving teaching and learning?
You want to handle that, Mr. Fesco?
That might be too far in the weeds, I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Fesco gets in those weeds. He, he knows the answers.
In a previous role, I was the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction.
My condolences, thank you.
I loved every minute of it.
Okay, good.
And, and lived through all the things that went on, the no child left behind, all the ramifications, federal impact, yada, yada, yada. We have a very robust professional development, division, department within curriculum instruction. There is funding that comes both from the state and from the district to ensure that with every, every program or every platform that we have introduced, there has been funding for the professional development that goes along with it. In fact, with the reopening of schools, we brought teachers back two weeks early to do training for the remote method.
Yes.
And, and so, professional development is intrinsic to, to everything.
Very good, thank you.
We also have a program called the START program, and, and it's a mentoring program that's used, every teacher new to the district, whether they're new to teaching or not, will go through at least a year-long mentorship with one of our stellar teachers, whose only job is to work with their cohort of new teachers, to spend as much time as they need, so that we could get their, their teaching abilities up to a, an experience level within the shortest amount of time. So, professional development has been of the utmost importance to the district, and will continue to be, I assume.
Very good, very good. How many teachers did you replace, or do you normally replace on a given year?
Oh, that's the big thing. Yeah, two to three hundred a year.
Okay.
A, a lot of it in the last five years in particular, has been the baby boomers are retiring. So, there's a, a big turnover there. The other thing that happens is that, and I'm, I'm doing in generalities, that we train our, our beginning teachers. Some of our neighboring counties have different salary schedules that become enticing after they finish the initial, say, four or five years. And so, we've had people leave for that. But we are working through those things, that those, those issues are becoming minimal as we speak.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I think my, my other question simply has to do with, well, administrative culture or administrative turnover, to your knowledge, and I don't, I, I don't assume that you are necessarily involved. I have traditionally, when I hire a new principal, let's say it's, it's in Mr. Slayton's regional area, I will, first of all, ask him if he would like to be on the selection team. But may, you may or may not know, how many, how many building-level administrators do you turn over in a given year?
Actually, this year, maybe three.
Yeah, this year might have been a little bit of an anomaly, right?
Well, it just happens to be, we, we, as you probably have all, always had, did you see, it's, it cycles, you never know who's coming up. But, there were no openings in high school. There were, I don't think there was any in middle school. And then, so there were a few, one or two assistant principals.
Okay.
Now, I know that our current superintendent has said, but down the road, and he keeps a calendar of this, there are many more coming. So, then our concern is the training, preparation, so that people are ready to step into those roles, and we, we're trying to see to those needs. We don't have a lot of administrators leaving because I just want to get out of here. I, I think that they're, they're working hard. They have, you know, have you been on a tour yet? You haven't been on-
No, he hasn't been on his tour yet.
So, I think, I think that we also see to the needs, not only of the educational part, but of the facilities.
Yes.
And making sure, and that's been a major effort by the board and the superintendent over the years, to improve, and improve, and keep the facilities up to date, and, when needed, build another one.
Right, right.
And we're, we're lucky enough that we can.
And another piece is, we have a principals pool, where people apply to get into it. And, and under Mr. Thomas, there's been a very deliberative curriculum created that addresses a lot of things that I'm not sure in the past were always addressed, you know, things like how to finance, you know, and, and not just being an instructional leader, but, you know, it, that there are a lot of other things that principals have to deal with.
Absolutely, yeah.
How do you, how do you keep your internal accounts and all those kind of things going?
Right.
So, we've, we've got a good program going now.
There's also a state requirement for that, that each county would have a training program to make sure that people are prepared and waiting and ready, and have the experiences. So, we're, we're not looking for someone to become a career assistant principal. Their, their career is to become a principal, or their, their goal. And so, we're giving them experiences and training to get them ready to, to do that when vacancies occur.
Very good.
I see that we have one minute, so.
Okay, okay. We've done the same thing. We, in fact, the state just passed legislation that says we have to do that, and gave us a minimum financial incentive to, but I had it running a couple of years before that, anyway. So, it's something we have to do, especially when the district's going well, really well, the board and the community are happy, you definitely want to grow your own. And, and when it's not going so well, then you want to potentially bring in people from the outside who have new ideas, or new vision, or new, new perspectives. So, I guess that probably applies to superintendent, but I don't want to DQ myself, so. I think that's all I have to say, other than thank you for the opportunity. I have, we enjoyed our time in Pensacola a month ago when we drove around, and I'm, believe it or not, I actually enjoyed this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and we thank you for your interest and your participation here. I'll remind you that this eve, and the, the people viewing, that this evening you'll be participating in our modified meet-and-greet that'll be virtual over live streaming. And if you've been watching, and there's a question that's popped into your mind, please go to our website and submit that question, so it can be answered tonight. Tomorrow, we get to meet with you individually, at each board member, in the other building, that is part of the administration. And then, if you have any questions or concerns as you go through the day, and we hope you have a great tour, you can talk with the FSBA staff. And we do appreciate you being here. I know it was a long trip, but we appreciate it.
Terry's been a good host, so thank you very much.
And I think, I think it's time for lunch now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think somebody has some things for us to get before we-